Okay.
We're good?
We're good.
All right, I'm calling the meeting to order. Walk call please.
Mayor Kenos?
Here.
Mr. Ambly, accent. Mr. McCready, accent. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Marrow?
Yeah.
Mr. Ruse?
Here.
Mr. Marrow?
Here.
Notice of this meeting provided in Burnsville News and County News filed with municipal clerk and posted on the municipal Overton Board on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please stand for what?
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 I mean, I can see.
In the public, public, officials, and I'm just part of my nation, not about it. The negative stall, we're very interested.
Okay. Welcome to the April from April.
Oh, May twenty-eighth.
The May twenty-eighth meeting of the Women's Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers in Borough Hall, and it is being broadcast live on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public who are here in person and those attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and dealing formal public hearings on the agenda, including public hearings on ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the Borough Clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane, or indecent language or language constituting hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk, and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of their three minutes of allotted time, or if they make any inappropriate or offensive comments. All speakers living in person on Zoom should state their names and addresses before they make their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they can be seen by members of the governing body and audience. Failure of the governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affects remote viewing and/or participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, concluding but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. Questions? All right, we're good. Okay, we have a couple presentations. Well, one here. Our guest here today, um, from, I know you all have a copy of this, United for Impact. And I guess most of you know I would have been on the stigma-free committee for the county. And we are, we have our sticker in the window that says we are stigma-free community, and it's basically, um, getting rid of the stigma about mental health and drug abuse or drug use. So we had our, um, as I was telling, is it Rosie or Rosie? Rosie, Rosie, I got that right. That we had our department heads trained in the Mental Health First Aid Kit, and Christine and I also took that. And we've really been working with Community in Crisis to do other mental health trainings. Um, we have a grant from, I forget, the agency that oversees the mayor's wellness to do specifically for mental health and particularly in the Latino community. So we have been working on this, so I thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I will read this. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and the stigma associated with mental health disorders is a significant barrier to seeking and receiving appropriate care. And whereas one in five Americans will experience a mental health condition in their lifetime, yet many do not seek help due to the stigma and discrimination surrounding mental health issues. And whereas the Borough of Burnsville recognizes the importance of raising awareness and promoting understanding of mental health to eliminate stigma, encourage open dialogue, and ensure that those affected by mental health conditions receive the support and care they need. And whereas recently founded and Somerset County-based, United for Impact, along with community partners, advocates for affected residents, and is committed to creating a stigma-free environment that promotes mental wellness, supports mental health recovery, and provides resources for those in need. And whereas Maine has been designated as Mental Health Awareness Fund since nineteen forty-nine. And whereas the establishment of a Mental Health Stigma-Free Day serves as a reminder of our collective responsibility to support mental health initiatives, educate the public, and advocate for policies that improve mental health care and eliminate stigma. And whereas the Borough of Burnsville is dedicated to fostering an inclusive community where mental health is valued and stigma is challenged, encouraging all residents to speak openly about mental health and seek help without fear of judgment. Now therefore, I, Mary Jane Kenos, mayor of Borough of Burnsville, in coordination with the Borough Council, do hereby put plenty May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as Mental Health Stigma-Free Day in the Borough of Burnsville, and urge all residents to join us in this observance by promoting mental health awareness, supporting those affected by mental health conditions, and working together to eliminate the stigma surrounding mental health. And I don't know if you want to take a minute just to talk about the unit else, what, United for Impact?
Yes, definitely. Thank you all for giving me your time, and thank you for listening. Thank you, mayor. So for United for Impact, we are dedicated to spread awareness. What we are seeing is there are different organizations already that exist. We're not trying to amend the rule here, but at the same time, there are kids, there are seniors, there are veterans that are committing suicide. Regardless of there being so many different organizations at this time. So we decided, because there's been happening all around us, there are some close friends that were affected by this, which sort of pushed us over the edge, and we thought we're going to do something about it. We are working with one of the biggest organizations in New Jersey, which is NAMI. We're working with them. We just launched our Mental Health Awareness Luncheon, which was very well received, which we had over a hundred plus guests there. We had President from NAMI come in there to as a speaker. We also had Mental Health Association people coming from Morris County, they were speakers as well. We are trying to spread the word around. We are looking for interns to join us, so our summer program is also full. We are trying to teach these kids how to read the red flags. So that when they go off to college, these are mostly the high schoolers that we have at the moment. So we are just trying to train a few people at a time. When they go off to college, they can read the red flags, what's happening around with their dormates, schoolmates, batchmates, and maybe they can do something about it, and we can save some kids. That's what I was supposed to say. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm sure the official probably may have to give you, so.
Yes.
Official copy?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We gotta take shots to. Okay, I think she would want this. I'm not. She's the chairwoman of the bachelor.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, calm down. Thank you.
Yes.
No, they're really good.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we have minutes to approve, April fifteenth and April twenty-ninth. Why have a motion?
Yes, minutes, April fifteenth, get the plan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Shades, okay. Uh, we now have our first open session for a public hearing on anything that's not, doesn't have its own public hearing in the ordinances. Grant.
All right. I just wanted to, uh, share some mostly thanks. Um, as you may have heard, the library had its last toilet fail. And, um, it, the, the, the damage took out our community room and most of the picture book area. And we wanted to say a hearty thanks to DPW for their quick response, particularly John Dowell. He has been instrumental in both attitude and expertise in helping us get this remediated, get it ripped out, get it repaired, and we're, we're hoping to be back in action soon. So thank you very much to him, and of course to the library staff who have had a great attitude about moving programs to the patio and rotunda. Um, I'll be out there at nine-thirty tomorrow morning singing with babies. Um, and thank you most of all to the public who have been very understanding of our temporary limitations. Um, thank you to Anthony and Nancy for getting our resolution tonight on the uh, docket in case we can't get payment directed from the insurance company to the carpet company. Um, so thank you very much. And, and happy news, uh, we now have our museum passes can be reserved online. We have bulletin museum passes, which is a bunch more provided by the Friends of the Library, and those are available to be reserved. You can pick a specific date with a specific museum. Many of them will go right to your email. Um, there's one or two that you have to pick up still at the library, but it's, um, we have some great new choices, the intro, the Constitution Museum, lots of books up. So please come check that out.
So before you.
Go ahead.
So I believe that we approved a while back when you were redoing the patterns.
Yes. Unrelated, we had, there was one single bathroom left in the children's area that wasn't.
Different bathroom.
This is the different single-use bathroom that was back by the children's area.
Must have like a bathroom, no, it's gone around.
I don't know why. They're, they appear to be unrelated, construction and the, but in better news, I have pictures, if you want to see, of the backsplash, and the, the tile work is up, they're tiling with Laura and Newbauer versus tomorrow, and it's coming along well, so.
What's the new bathroom?
I've heard days, I'll believe all of it, if I have idea. But they're, they're supposed to be done any minute now.
I'm sorry, that's terrible delivery.
Well, it is, it is.
Everybody's been great and like practice groups people together, so.
It's funny, it's really shitty, sorry.
But thank you, thank you for having me.
Yeah, we're trying to still on as much as we can.
Yeah. You really have done a good job in recovering and moving things like that, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who should be heard or online?
I don't have a chat, it's a really tough act to follow.
It's been a long day.
I might, I don't, I don't really have come up for this anymore. Carrie Hazleton, my book wrote, uh, I just wanted to say I wasn't able to be at the last meeting, but I did, I did read a Burnsville News article about the discussion about the the path up at the Polo Grounds, and I'm happy that looks like we're finding a way to make that happen. But I want to say that I agree with Councilwoman McCready. I think that if we pave part of it and leave it that way until sometime later, that it's not gonna, it's not gonna look good. And when I think about how many people go to Natarar and how they've never had pavement there, and when I was working in physical therapy with people with gain imbalance disorders, we participated in the Miles from Metheny, and people with walkers, canes, and wheelchairs could easily go around on that path. So I think maybe my, I would think the best thing to do is fix the drainage, which has always been like the number one concern and the biggest capital expense at this point for that path, um, from what I understand from the article. Um, and get a gravel path in, the part where the gravel is rough, have that smoothed out, I guess that's towards the middle school, and put in a gravel path and see how that works for us, rather than putting in the, you know, partial on a paved path. And I just think that we may find that doing that is all we need to have what we, what we are looking to accomplish. Especially since I noticed during COVID that people were walking the, the sidewalks, if they really need a hard surface, they have a perfectly good sidewalk to walk around the bedwell in the middle school, and people were just making laps there during COVID when we were doing the farmer's market there. I'm sorry, I'm over time.
No, I, I forgot this.
Oh, I was like, wow, that was quick. But yeah, no, I would just.
Yeah. Do you want to address it?
Yeah. What?
Well, I think we're going to take a look at what, basically after that discussion, we thought we would actually, we're going to talk about the next meeting. Because I think a number of us agree, and we may, we're still deciding, so Nancy, I don't want to get ahead of what you're thinking, but we may even try to look at bids for paved and then gravel, and see how they come back with some options on that, so that, um, uh, we have.
Taking two different bids, you mean?
Yeah, we're thinking about maybe doing something like that, but I think after that discussion, we, um, we're on the same lines, so. Nancy.
So after the discussion, I asked Tommy to put together several different estimates. One for all stone dust, one for crushed stone, one for all pavement, and then here we have the one for half and half. The only concern, and it's interesting what you just said, the concern was about ADA compliance, and you're saying that stone dust, they were able to walk and put with.
Oh, yeah, I mean, and I was working with patients with Parkinson's disease, um, Alzheimer's, and we, we were, and my dad, I also took in there with a walker. That path supports wheelchairs, it supports canes, it supports walkers, and i- i- people are able to use it. And so if we do a quality job with the drainage in that one area where we're wet, I think we might find a half use that we really want with, without having to go half and half, or, um, you spend the, the, you know, lard money that seems like it would take to, to do the paved path. Yeah.
I like this.
Yeah.
You know, what I want to do is reach out to the county, um, since they're, they own Natarar, they ask them about the product they use or how they have.
You know, when they had flood this year, I noticed in the area where the river had risen that all of the stone dust, and we don't have that kind of flooding incident because we don't have the rare to river coming through. But it all moved into the field, and underneath there was the large stone, the riprap, almost riprap, that, that was left there underneath, so that must be their base, and that means that we could go over top of that area where we had the trucks go in over by the middle school. We could maybe, I'm sure the engineer was able to do it, we could top that with the stone dust, and that would be the base. And that, if we did ever want to pave it, that would be a base that we'd be putting in anyway.
Yeah, so I didn't ask that about, well, what would happen if we did, you know, partial mound and wanted to pave it, how much more is that? So Tommy said, and he put, I think it was five inches of stone now, so then you just have to scrape the top two off if you wanted to pave it, something like that. Whatever it was, he's putting together a bunch of different options, and then we're not going to bid them yet, we're going to bring the estimates to you, to see if they're vastly different, if you wanted.
Yeah, I'm on this book, I'm in the estimate.
They had this amazing machine at county, too. After this, uh, stone dust had moved, they were vacuuming it up into piles, and then they put it, they took it right out of the lawn and put it right back there at the lawn. So if we ever got in trouble, we could borrow it.
I think one of our public workspeople is brought, we used to work on the headset with the forms.
So. Which one?
Do farm, which is the.
Yeah.
I wonder which one of the years.
What?
Now we keep our previous down, too.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Terry. Um, anybody online? All right, I will close this public session. We have, let's see, ordinances to introduce. Uh, we'll just start with chat.
Sure. I move ordinance twenty-two-four nineteen-eighty-nine, ordinance in place of all, like, all the reverends and fellow places in Amendment Chapter Three of the Borough Code and Title Police Litigation, introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law. Public hearing is scheduled for meeting beginning seventy in Monday, June.
Second.
All in favor?
Mayor, I just want, before you do that, there was one open question is whether the current ordinance prohibits the sale of beer in mind. Is that remaining, or is it coming out?
My point is, yeah.
I don't, I don't think that they want to sell it.
I would think so too, but I, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, they want it sold.
Yeah, they'll take that out.
Yeah, take it out. I, I started in bold, I think in italics, so that will not require the ordinances introduced.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
This is mainly we're trying to get the ordinance and compliance with, to allow us at a town festival to have a beer garden.
Right, and I, I tried to make it a big.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, they want to sell. All right, I may proceed. Next one.
I move that ordinance twenty-two-four dash two thousand, an ordinance vacating a portion of Burnsville Avenue, which is outside of the roadway and sidewalk area, and which is necessary for the construction of the Affordable Housing Development at sixty-three Burnsville Avenue. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and the public hearing is scheduled for meeting beginning at seven P M, Monday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we talked about this last time, this is a piece that's not being used for anything. Um, now we're going to do the next one.
Yep, I move that ordinance from twenty-four two thousand and one, made procedural change to the notice required to an owner in connection with repairs of sidewalks and amendment chapter fourteen of the Borough Project Title Streets and Sidewalks, been issued by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and the public hearing is scheduled for meeting beginning at seven P M, Monday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So. Yeah, we have that.
I move that.
Did you have a question?
That was, that was long before.
Okay.
No, I did have a question, we have, oh, sorry.
No one? Uh, I move that ordinance twenty-two-four two thousand and two, appropriating one million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred dollars from the Capital Improvement Fund for various equipment and improvements, be introduced by title, that on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing is scheduled for meeting beginning at seven P M, Monday, June fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh. And anyone in the public who wants to see what that's about, it's in the budget presentation, if you want to look at the detail of the capital budget. All right, we have resolutions twenty-four one seventeen, giving twenty-four one twenty-three B. And just, uh, want to, uh, thank people for volunteering again for uh, yeah, Lenny and Bonnie, and, um, Magda Gonzalez, so, great. And people, I think they're both going to be on the first aid.
Barrel number twenty-four one seventeen.
Oh, did I?
Twenty-four, one twenty-four.
Right, it's further than. All right. Walk call please.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. Marrow?
Yes.
Mr. Ruse?
Yes.
Mr. Marrow?
Yes.
All right, we're up to adoption of the bubble.
I feel it's the best one.
All right, I will open the public hearing on the twenty-two-four municipal budget.
Can I move that the, the bow comes the official community? And overall of Burnsville, is that what you mean?
Find it, lost man goes.
So when anyone in the public would like to be heard on the budget, and we had an excellent presentation last month, was it, was it?
Yep.
Yeah. And it is available on the website. See you done, I will close the public hearing. All right, finance chair is in here.
Do we do it?
Yeah.
I move that resolution twenty-four dash one-two-five, adoption of the twenty-two-four municipal budget to be back.
I'll give the second, you write the orders.
Walk call please.
Mr. Marrow?
Yes.
Mr. Ruse?
Yeah.
Mr. Marrow?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Well, you know, certainly against me, here we are in June. The, you have it for the year, just a little bit of budget. Oh, good system. I know. All right, oh, mayor's update, okay.
Let me just recognize, I'm a plus, he's so long, but Leslie Robinson's on, thanks for all the hard work, that would have helped. So much for you.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yes, thank you, Leslie.
I just caught that up in my attitude.
Yeah, yeah, couldn't have done it without you.
Absolutely. And Nancy, too.
Yes. Good call. All right, mayor's update, um, we had a mayor's wellness meeting for which we stuffed all the envelopes to send out the invitation for the senior music crew of the year that we're having on Thursday. Charlie Zabala is going to do a program for us. Uh, I attended the intergenerational Bolden Senior Prom at the high school, and they brought it back, I think two thousand and nineteen was the last year they did it because of COVID. Um, I believe it's the Key Club that sponsored it, and it was really, they did a great job. The kids served the food. They had tons of donations, and it was a pretty good turnout. More, more people my age around this town than I thought. I attended the Conference of Mayors from, uh, May fifteenth to the seventeenth. Topics covered were technical assistance brands, flood proofing, which I heard, I didn't notice, that a tree absorbs four thousand gallons of water. Just one tree. Um, there was a seminar, affordable housing pilot programs, communications insights from experience. So, uh, all in all, an excellent conference, and they have a new administrative executive director, who I know, and she's doing a great job. On the eighteenth, we had Burnsville Night at the Ballpark, thank you Nancy for coming with the family. And Jeff throwing out that first ball.
Lobbying, I love it.
At least he made it to the plate.
He did.
That's good. Um, we did get at that Congressman Kane's, um, I'm not sure what his title is, J D Bryant came and presented us with a, a tissue. There it is. Uh, this beautiful congressional record, copy of the congressional record, which says, uh, from, Mr. Speaker, I rise today to extend my warmest congratulations to Burnsville on its hundredth anniversary. I am truly grateful to be celebrating this monumental milestone with you all. Over the past hundred years, Burnsville has blossomed into a vibrant town with exquisite natural scenery, rich culture, and bustling town center. Burnsville is also home to my congressional district office, so I can personally attest to its unique charm and history. I am proud to have such a remarkable town within the seventh district, and I look forward to watching it continue to flourish in the coming decades. I wish Burnsville a wonderful centennial anniversary. May, your next century be filled with as much success as this one. So we decided we're going to get this right, and we'll put it up to. Um, well, I, I, I attended on the twenty-first, uh, Bedwell Museum of Natural History. That is phenomenal. Uh, what the fourth grade kids did with paper mache was over the top. Uh, I have posted some pictures on, on the bubble. Uh, but they had done, you know, a whole under the sea montage with, you know, a life-size shark and a paper mache, a life-size giraffe for the jungle scene, absolutely amazing. It was, they do such great, that was, uh, Mr. T, that's his team. Um, I met with the superintendent and the business administrator from the school to talk about children's services. We then had the Memorial Day Parade yesterday. Thank you again, Nancy, for coming out, supporting it. Um, considering the weather, it was a good turnout. Jeff, Al, and Christine were there. Um, and they actually let me talk. Um, but you know, I think it was important because Bill uh, Staley never gets any recognition, and he's done this for so long, so I was glad that I could introduce him and kind of give a little of his background. John Sternig was the grand marshal, and, uh, Bob Walsh was the keynote, who ninety-eight years old, did a great job. He was in the act sack, which I thought was, and I understand he has a, an album that he made with his experiences that maybe the library could get in the archives. Um, just a reminder, the car show is this Sunday, sixth, that's a Sunday, June sixth, June second, um, in the train station. It's not at the high school this year, it will be at the train station. So please support that, I think it's nine to three. And there's a Somerset County Governing Officials Association meeting on the twelfth at six-thirty at the Columbia State House in Denver. And that is my authority. Nancy?
Thank you. Uh, we received notification from P S E and G that the Works of Utilities is requiring them to replace gas meters in people's homes. Um, and they did this in my town a few years ago, so I guess they just go down my town. Um, they sent letters to residents, I don't know if they've gotten one. Many residents have not responded to the appointment, so P S E and G is sending out more letters, letting people know that this is a mandatory replacement. Um, and that they need or actually will be able to be right without going to your home, so it's more convenient for people as well. But it's mostly safety upgrade. Um, not that the unsafe nap, but they're just trying to, you know, keep up. The letter tells residents they, what they need to do to schedule the installation, um, and if they don't get a response to this letter, they'll send up one more, but eventually if you don't schedule it, they will turn off your gas, so it's very important to you, yeah. Um, we could put the letter on our website so that if people don't get it, they can call them and make that appointment. Uh, as we discussed at the last meeting, we received two bids for the Polo Grounds. Uh, as we discussed at the last meeting, we received two bids for the Polo Grounds project. One was disqualified because it was not responsive and the other being much higher than our estimate. So uh, we're going to need to reject both those bids, so we will do a resolution in June. Uh, but in the meantime, per your direction, the engineer and the architect are rebidding separately. And those bids will go out in June eleventh and are due back in July second with an award date at our July eighth meeting. Um, we're still waiting for a quote from Moscow to get the lights separately from um, the call, to the call. And then finally, uh, as the mayor mentioned, it was our Memorial Day parade and ceremony. And so I want to thank our retroacher Bob Markowitz for the hard work that he put in to open the pool on time, to get summer camp going and organize Memorial Day parade and ceremony all basically at the same time. Um, great job, Bob. And thank you to Cindy Berger and Brian Faltudo, who also are working with Bob this year. But I'm sure Bob was happy as I am to welcome Alana Moria, she is the new um. Her title is Program Coordinator for the Recreation Department. And Friday was her first day in, just in time for a Memorial Day. And um, so she was back today, so that's good, so. So I just want to welcome her and um. Say thank you to Bob and his team for a very fun event.
Basically, yeah, it really, it was a lot for one weekend there to get going, so.
Yeah.
All right, we can't walk without a hitch. Um, do I need a motion to accept the monthly reports?
I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Items of business. Unification coordinator, person of honor, what are the other ones? Did you not add the letter?
No. Um, so this topic is regarding Wendy Brown's job. Uh, there are a couple of points I want to make first. Uh, a rice notice was issued to Wendy last week notifying her she would be discussed in executive closed session at today's meeting. Um, and giving her the option of asking council to have discussion in open session, which she did make that request, which is why we're talking about it now. Um. There's been a lot of questions about rice notices and meetings and all that, so I just wanted to give like a little bit of background about that. Uh, a rice notice is started in a nineteen seventy seven case in Union County. Regina Rice was the president of the teachers' union. And the case revolved around mother employees whose status may be adversely affected, must be advised to the right to have. To require the employer to have their discussion held. The case affirmed that that requirement is necessary and that the document is now called a rice notice named after Regina Rice. Um, so over the years, the requirement that a public employer provide this requirement has kind of expanded to mean any change in employment status, promotion raises, et cetera. Would also require the issuance of rice numbers. Um, but the effects of the rice numbers are only that any discussion that would have been held in closed session must be now held in open. So it's not a public hearing, no, they, neither the public or employee are given the right to speak. So it's basically a private conversation between the government body members uh, in front of a bunch of people. So this does include anything you would have talked about, which includes the uh, employee's performance. Um, so uh, to get to the gist of what we're talking about, um, quick background. Uh, Wendy um, was hired in the borough in November twenty twenty one as assistant of the tax assessor. Shortly after I started here in April twenty three, the assessor informed me that Wendy was not really able to grasp what she needed to in order to be an effective assistant. He informed me that he brought in someone uh, in the same position from the other town to train Wendy on a couple of different occasions. But she was not really retaining the information. So that's how I suggested we ask the person from the other town to come back and assess whether she had improved since the original training. And maybe work with her some more, but the woman from the other town uh, refused, refused to come. So uh, I did get another employee from a different town to come in to work with Wendy on two occasions. But unfortunately, the conclusion was the same, that she just could not learn what was necessary to give a job then. So I should note that these conversations did not take place in a vacuum and I did have a conversation with Wendy along the way. And I learned that her talents really lie outside the office, she's very creative and she loves working outdoors. So in fact, she told me more than once, she would love to work in an outside job, even for public work. But unfortunately, the director felt that she did not have the qualifications to do that job. So I came up with a solution that would allow her to keep a full-time job with no cut in salary and benefits. And also at the same time to provide service to the borough. So I came up with a position where she could be outside every day doing what she loves and we all decided to call her unification coordinator. And there was a position where she could plant flowers, weave public grounds, et cetera. And because I knew that without sustaining a full-time position and police department was looking for it, pressing guard, we combined them. And you approved of it and we carried the job and gave her the offer. Um, she was so happy that day, she actually cried and she couldn't thank me enough. And so beginning September, she provided this service that allowed D P W workers to focus on other things. Um. But around mid-January, she went on disability, she has been out since with um, her original estimates from her doctor to return on July first. Uh, the last that we heard from her, uh, that Anthony heard from her, she informed us, she returns the doctor next on June seventeen. So this is the issue. Her F M L A ended on April eighth, her disability payments ended on May sixth. Her unification and sick days were applied, which end on Friday, this Friday, the thirty first. So I informed Wendy three times in writing, in emails on May sixth and twenty first, and by letter delivered via FedEx on May twenty third. That her disability and P T O were ending. And in May twenty first email, I said, this is a quote. If you would like to be considered for unpaid leave, because that's basically what would happen after the thirty first. An unpaid leave of absence. If you would like to be considered for unpaid leave and agree to make the required payments, which refers to her health benefits and pension. You will need to request in writing that the council approve it. Therefore, I will leave a letter or an email prior to the twenty eighth. And then in my May twenty third letter, I said, you would need to ask the borough council and write me to grant a leave of absence without pay. I'm not on the details in the email, but it is important to note that I would leave this letter by May twenty eighth prior to meeting if your clients return to work. The only response I received to any of my communication was an email from Wendy on Friday, in which she informed me that she would like this meeting to be held in public. She also requested, well, she said that she wanted to come here and talk about any accommodations she would need when she returned from her doctor. But I told her that that would not be something to be discussed in this venue because of the policy incident. But um, she did not request that the council approve her unpaid leave. She didn't reference it. So um, because this is a policy required in our personnel manual. And in spite of me notifying her on three separate occasions, Wendy has not provided that letter. And so this is the last meeting that you will meet prior to the thirty first, where you could have considered an unpaid leave. Um, as advised by our labor attorney, as of next Monday, she will have constructively resigned from both positions. Because there is no, she would no longer be in the play with the borough. So there is no action we need to take because you're not terminating her, she just has no more time and she is unable to return. So um, I would assume that either Jack or our labor attorney sent her a letter, I guess.
True.
Yeah, to send her a letter that, you know, I mean, unfortunately, that's the. You can only report to water, so um, you're, I, you know, there's really not a lot, a lot to do, so I figured I would just bring them to you and. See if you have any questions.
Yeah, thank you for sharing the correspondence so that we can see.
I put it in your pocket.
Yeah, so thank you for that.
Okay.
So that's it for then.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we don't have any correspondence, do we? Any unfinished business? Anyone? Uh, new business, okay, now I can say. Yes, thank you, Cleveland, Lenny and Magla for volunteering. Actually, I saw Magla yesterday, she was at the parade. That's great, they got more people. Um, and then we've got the, the contract for Summit Health. Just renewing it. And we went out to bid on that, did we?
Yes, yeah.
They were all that better. Yeah. Is that all one there, because they expanded, is that a all under one contract? Yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, great. All right, uh, anyone want to move it? Christine?
Resolution twenty four dash one twenty six. And twenty four dash one twenty seven be adopted.
So. Roll call please.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mrs. Romero?
Yes.
All right, we have another open session, if anyone would like to comment on anything?
I have a comment, unless you're going to come say it.
Um.
The thing about the firehouse.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was going to say, as we spoke. Two words, great minds think alike. So I've come to many uh, characters in the under road. I've come to many uh, Memorial Day services and sometimes it's beastly hot, sometimes it's raining, sometimes it's threatening rain. Always noisy when we're at Borough Hall, because they open up the road, you can't hear the speeches. So I want to put in a vote for moving the Memorial Day celebration to the firehouse. Currently, so we don't have to worry about the rain. I thought it worked out great, all the trucks were lined up, everybody was safe, this, we were able to hear all the speeches. And it just made for a great experience for everybody, so.
You know, it was better.
Yeah, the audio.
The police are about to.
Yeah, maybe they don't. Safer, shorter and no worries, that, it's so hot and there's no place to sit and the kids get fidgety on the hill. This way, they, they just kind of went, like I, I noticed that most of the scouts were gone. Cause they had to move on to do other things, but that wasn't disruptive because we, if they weren't visible, visibly leaving.
Yeah. The only thing I heard from people that were like outside the doors, that they couldn't hear.
They need, they couldn't, and there was plenty of room, but yeah.
I don't know why they were out here.
I mean, I'm all for it, I just don't know if we can, you mean, determine it?
It's really, well, it's the veterans in recreation and the fire company that have to agree on that, but um, of course.
Yeah, it was just really much.
Bob kind of organizes it so we can just sit on to Bob and he can uh, take it up with, you know. I think the veterans might be veteranized up too.
Yeah.
They can have to go down that steep hill and then get back up.
Yeah, and then the heat, you know, can get to them too, so.
Yeah. I just would suggest we have more chairs so more people could sit.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that was it, okay. Anyone else? Okay. Um, we have an executive session, I don't think, we, we don't need to come back now, do we?
No, yeah, I don't remember, so I'll move this to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, well, that would be for time. That is on the record here.